Everybody, I'm going to have you be seated. We're going to start the meeting, please. Good evening. My name is Stacy Yarborough. I am the town clerk for North Haven and I welcome you to our special town meeting. I have to tell you, I am incredibly impressed at the number of people who have attended this meeting and we are very thankful for all of you who have come down tonight. Some other formalities. This evening, the meeting is brought to you pursuant to Chapter 7, Section 706 of the North Haven Town Charter. Before we proceed, we have to elect a moderator for our meeting. And the moderator must have been a registered voter in our town as of the last election and only those citizens registered to vote in North Haven and citizens of the United States 18 years of age or older or who may pay taxes to the town on an assessment of property of not less than $1,000 on the most recent grant list may vote pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7-6. Lastly, not only when you're voting upon the moderator, any vote taken tonight, you must be an elector. And if you're not 100% sure if you're an elector based upon the criteria I've just read, I actually have my registry list up here and you can check with me to be sure. Now, at this time, what I'm going to do is open the floor for nominations for our meeting moderator. Are there any nominations for tonight's moderator? Yes?
I'd like to nominate Lynn Fredrickson.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other nominations for moderator? Alrighty, hearing none, I'm going to close the nominations and submit the issue to a vote. All in favor of Lynn Fredrickson as the meeting moderator signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. The vote for moderator has passed and I declare Lynn Fredrickson as tonight's special town meeting moderator.
And thank you, members of the town meeting. At this time, the town clerk will read the call of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. A special town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in a town meeting of the town of North Haven, Connecticut will be held on Monday, June 6, 2002 at 7:00 PM in the auditorium of the North Haven High School, 221 Elm Street in North Haven, Connecticut for the following purpose. One, to consider, discuss, and act upon the recommendations of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. A, to appropriate $3,500,000 for athletic field improvements consisting of: One, installation of dugouts, grandstand seating, a press box, and protective netting; restroom facilities, improvements, additional parking, field improvements, and other related improvements at the girls' high school softball field. Two, relocation of the field, installation of dugouts, additional seating, a press box, batting cages, and protective netting; additional parking, and other related improvements at the boys' high school baseball field. And three, installation of grandstand seating at the middle school synthetic turf fields; the appropriation be spent for design, demolition, and construction costs, equipment, furnishings, materials, site improvements, survey costs, architect fees, engineering fees, other consultant fees, legal fees, net temporary interests, and other financing costs and other expenses related to the project. B, to issue bonds or notes of the town in the amount not to exceed $3,500,000; to provide that the amount of bonds or notes authorized to be issued shall be reduced by any grants received for the project. C, to issue temporary notes of the town in the amount not to exceed $3,500,000 in anticipation of such bonds or notes. D, to determine or authorize the first selectman and the treasurer of the town to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, redemption provisions, form, and other details of the bonds or notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds or notes. E, to make such action to allow temporary advances of available funds which the town reasonably expects will be reimbursed from the proceeds of borrowings, and to authorize the first selectman and the treasurer to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they may deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds or notes authorized by the resolution if issued on a tax-exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates and investment earnings to the United States in future years. F, to authorize the first selectman and the treasurer to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information, which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds or notes. And G, to authorize the first selectman, the treasurer, and other proper officers of the town to take all other action which is necessary or desirable to complete the project and to issue bonds or notes to finance aforesaid appropriation. This notice was dated at North Haven, Connecticut on the 5th day of May 2022 by the North Haven Board of Selectmen.
The town clerk will now read Agenda Item Number 1 for action.
Agenda Item Number 1. To consider, discuss, and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. A, to appropriate $3,500,000 for athletic field improvements consisting of: One, installation of dugouts, grandstand seating, a press box, and protective netting; restroom facilities, improvements, additional parking, field improvements, and other related improvements at the girls' high school softball field. Two, relocation of the field, installation of dugouts, additional seating, a press box, batting cages, and protective netting; additional parking, and other related improvements at the boys' high school baseball field. And three, installation of grandstand seating at the middle school synthetic turf fields. The appropriation may be spent for design, demolition, and construction costs, equipment, furnishings, materials, site improvements, survey costs, architect fees, engineering fees, other consultant fees, legal fees, net temporary interests, and other financing costs, and other expenses related to the project. B, to issue bonds or notes of the town in an amount not to exceed $3,500,000; to provide that the amount of bonds or notes authorized to be issued shall be reduced by any grants received for the project. C, to issue temporary notes of the town in an amount not to exceed $3,500,000 in anticipation of such bonds or notes. D, to determine or authorize the first selectman and the treasurer of the town to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, redemption provisions, form, and other details of the bonds or notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds or notes. E, to take such action to allow temporary advances of available funds which the town reasonably expects will be reimbursed from the proceeds of borrowing, and to authorize the first selectman and the treasurer to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds or notes authorized by the resolution if issued on a tax-exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years. F, to authorize the first selectman and the treasurer to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefits of holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds or notes. And G, to authorize the first selectman, the treasurer, and other proper officers of the town to take all action which is necessary or desirable to complete the project and to issue bonds or notes to finance aforesaid appropriation.
We now have the agenda item properly recited before our meeting, so we shall move on to the public discussion of the matter. For any ensuing discussion, all speakers must be recognized, come to the microphone, and clearly state your name and address. You must come to the microphone or your comments will not be audible for the broadcast. Discussion should be limited to the pending question. Lastly, please keep your comments or questions to no longer than five minutes. If you need further time, you may return to the microphone for five additional minutes after everyone else has had a chance to speak. Is there any discussion? Mr. Frida?
Do I go up there?
Yes, please, come to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Mark Enslin, 75 Round Hill Road, Connecticut. I'm the boys' assistant tennis coach. I'm in favor of this resolution, however, I need to let the town know that the tennis courts service is coming up. It's bubbling, it's not safe. I was just wondering if the proposal that's put before us is repairing any damaged courts, damaged fields in the town? And I would think that any fields or athletic facilities that are damaged need to be repaired first before you add new facilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Lynn Sedowski, under Public Works. We are currently separate and apart from this proposal, looking at tennis courts, including what's going on in Kana Park. We're building a couple pickleball courts and we're also looking at the tennis courts at the high school under separate funding for maintenance. So, I can't say it's going to be addressed under this package, but we are addressing it under a different route.
Mr. Frida?
And now that we've gotten through the technicalities of the town meeting format, I'd like to let you know that I put together an 11-slide presentation that I'd like to take you through. But before I do, I'd like to tell you a couple of things going on. As far as me personally, I'm the man, ladies and gentlemen, on multiple missions, and I've said that many times before. Three of the most important missions that I'm on are to get better professionally, to continue to do more and get better to serve the fine citizens of North Haven. Number two, to ensure that the town and the town government continues to get better on its delivery of services to our town residents, and we're continuing to reinvest back into that. And number three, to identify areas across the town that I think need to be improved. To be improved, to enhance the experience of, in this case tonight, those of our high school athletes playing sports, our spectators. We're renovating parks, putting new playscapes in. All of that is separate from this bond resolution tonight. And as far as the tennis courts, sir, those tennis courts will be repaired. It won't be part of this, but that is another initiative that we're looking to get done. Everywhere across the town, I'm out there every day, I'm out with the people, I'm listening to the people. I hear things that need to be done. I will personally go out and look at things that need to be done. And the genesis of tonight started about a year and a half ago, about a year ago, let's say, when I went to a high school playoff game. I walked into the DeMayo complex and I see a lot of people, they come up to me, and people like to say hello, I'm sitting in the crowd with people, and a couple of our residents' parents of some of the athletes said, "Mr. Frida, do you think that we could try to improve these fields?" And of course, baseball being my sport down through the years, having played over 1,200 games in my amateur career, I'm very sensitive to the condition of fields. So during these conversations, I said that we are going to try to improve these fields. And the improvements were the wraparound amenities to fields that many other cities and towns have. Now, I played a lot of baseball in West Haven down through the years, ladies and gentlemen, and if you go to West Haven, that field there, a field I played many games at, there's press box, there's dugouts, there's bullpens, and that, to me, that afternoon, watching that game on a Saturday afternoon, interacting with the fine citizens of North Haven who were there, it dawned on me that we have to do a better job in enhancing these facilities. So through a process that involved great collaboration between myself, our park department, our Board of Education, our superintendent, our athletic director, Lynn who you just heard speak here at Public Works, Phil Diana who's here tonight who runs all and handles all the fields, the business manager at the Board of Ed, we engaged the sports community. I talked to dozens and dozens of leaders of the sports community to engage them. And we actually brought Coach Bob DeMayo and his lovely wife Betty into my office to get their feelings and get their opinions as to what needed to be done. That was the start of it. The process unfolded quickly, what I just mentioned, and then I had to bring it through, which I did through the governmental procedures. We brought it to the Board of Selectmen, unanimous approval. We brought it to the Board of Finance, only one dissenting vote. The bond resolution passed at the Board of Selectmen, at the Board of Finance, and here we are tonight. So tonight, during these 11 slides, I'd like to share with you some comprehensive information as to what we're trying to accomplish. As was stated, we are here this evening to discuss and act upon the appropriation of bonds in the amount of 3.5 million for high school athletic field improvements. Before I move to the next slide, I'd like to share with you that the town is doing very well financially. We continue to be AAA rated by the rating agencies, and in four to five years, the town will be significantly reducing its debt burden, allowing capacity to continue to borrow if we choose to, to continue to improve the town. This is a project that has my 1,000% support, because I've seen clearly, ladies and gentlemen, the antiquated aspects of our high school athletic fields and facility. Let's take a look at what we plan to do and what the approximate cost may be, which include engineering and design costs. These costs are strictly estimates at this point in time. We put together these estimates for your review, and you must realize that we will be going through a rigorous bid process to ensure that we get the right costs per component of this bond resolution. The first thing I'd like to mention is the turf field enhancements, and we think that it's very important to put grandstand bleacher seating there, to have more capacity for people to sit rather than bring chairs and have to look through a fence, and we estimate that that cost for that seating capacity will be $600,000. We'd like to put a grandstand fence of six foot high, BVCL perimeter fencing system that will cost approximately $130,000. This will allow us and our athletic group, our director of athletics, our athletic director, Steve Blumenthal, with that fencing there, we'll be able to potentially host more tournaments and bring more revenue into that field as a result of more utilization. Rentals of portable bleachers for September and October because that one of my other initiatives is to improve the North Haven track that is at least 28 years old and unsafe in certain areas. So you go by the track, you will see that the track is closed right now. That's a separate funding package, and that track renovation will start very soon, and we anticipate that the major reconstruction will run through October. So part of this 3.5 bond resolution includes $20,000 to rent seating for the turf fields where the high school football team will be playing during those months. One of the things that always has to be contemplated and kept in mind is that anything we do with high school sports, we must realize that Title IX is very important, the equality between boys' sports and girls' sports. So on the varsity softball field, these are some of the enhancements that we're looking at. Resizing the existing outfield, adding six-foot-high outfield fence, and resizing the infield to maintain 25 feet from existing fence lines, and then adjust the existing irrigation as needed. This is critically important for the long term of that field. We estimate that cost $150,000. Neither of these fields have dugouts, and I know Coach DeMayo, for years, has been looking for dugouts in these fields. We're one of the few teams, if the only team, in the SEC that doesn't have dugouts for our players. We can do better, ladies and gentlemen, and improve North Haven in this respect. So covered dugouts, $130,000 is the estimation, and the size, six foot by five inches by 24 feet by four inches. That's a dugout, ladies and gentlemen, that I played a lot of games at at Central University, Central Connecticut University, that's the size of that dugout there. In terms of a scoreboard, new scoreboard with existing infrastructure, we estimate Backstop padding for shading, and shading, $13,000. Bullpens and a press box for each team, $210,000. So when I say each team, for the girls and for the boys. And there are a lot of towns and cities in the SEC of which there are bullpens and press boxes. We have really neither. And electrical work, the outlet behind the pitcher's mound, $20,000. This is for the girls' softball field, now, the high school softball field. So when we look at the DeMayo baseball field and looking at what enhancements that we want to bring forward, well, we're looking to relocate the infield, install a new 40-foot backstop with a six-foot cantilever, to install a new six-foot-high outfield fencing system with a warning track. And by repositioning that field, that'll allow us, in our opinion, to put a press box in the back. The cost of that, that's a significant portion of this, that's a lot of work, ladies and gentlemen, $1,560,000. That's the estimation. Covered dugouts, the same, six foot, five inches, 24 by four, $130,000. The scoreboard with existing infrastructure, $76,000. Backstop padding, like we just talked with the varsity softball field, $13,000. Bullpens and press box, $210,000. And the electrical work behind the mound, $20,000. Other enhancements, signage, North Haven baseball and Bob DeMayo signage, $10,000. Relocating that beautiful statue there, $6,000. I was there that night when Coach DeMayo was honored, years ago, when that statue was unveiled. And the JV field enhancements, that's over at the Valley Brook Field there, it's on the other side of the parking lot, when you drive into the sports complex, it's to the right. We need to install a new water line there, and for those fields, to connect to the existing main line in the road, a new backflow preventer, cabinet, new irrigation for the upper fields. The irrigation in the JV fields are $137,000. So I think that this is a very important initiative for the town of North Haven, and this initiative, once again, has my 1,000% support. Please understand that everything I bring forward to the public is designed to improve the town of North Haven. Think about the fact, ladies and gentlemen, if we decided to not do anything and we delayed infrastructure improvements, well, that doesn't look good for the town. The optics become poor. I can tell you that North Haven is a town of which hundreds and hundreds of families want to move in looking for homes. Property values have increased and there's bidding in the streets. A house was listed recently for $365,000 on Shawmet Avenue, within moments, it went to $395,000. And that house happened to be right near one of the fields over there on Bailey Road. And as far as the Bailey Road field, although that's not part of this bonding program tonight, we have received a $250,000 grant to improve Bailey Field, and we're hoping to replace that backstop, put dugouts in there, and enhance that field also. So tonight, that's the summarization. We'd like to hear your feedback, if you have any questions. Two very key people here tonight on the technical aspect of the questions, Lynn Sedowski and Phil Diana, will be more than happy to answer your questions, but we'd love to hear your feedback also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Frida? Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Yes, please come forward.
I'm Sally Blaiming, and I'm at 5 Blossom Drive. When this matter came before the Board of Selectmen on May 5th, I supported it, as Mr. Frida said, it was a unanimous decision, and I am still basically in support of this project. And I'm like, Mr. Frida, I have a longstanding involvement in sports, but here in North Haven, as a high school varsity athlete in Perkin-Rick softball, I didn't play 1,000 games, but I played about 900. I have a quick question for the tennis coach, because one thing that's always bothered me about the tennis courts at the complex there in Maple is that the courts run east-west. And I worked for the town, were there many years, at tennis courts, and was always told they had to run north-south because of the sun. Do you have any position on the...
Well, it's kind of late to redirect the tennis courts, moving south, yes. USTA rules require...
Okay.
... recommend tennis courts be north and south.
Go to the microphone, please.
Sorry. Go to the microphone, please. Oh, thank you. Sorry. Okay.
Yes, tennis courts generally are built in the north-south direction, the reason being, if you're on the east side of the tennis court, our heart matches the music late afternoon. If you're on the east side of the tennis court, it would mean you're pointing to the west side of the tennis court, the sun sets right behind you. If that ball was in the air, oh, you're seeing the sun, not the ball. We've actually had kids get hit with a tennis ball because they couldn't see it that well then. In some cases, we use it for our advantage, but in some cases, it can be 80 degrees as well. Yes, tennis courts should be, I don't know who designed them or who made them out, if the architect was, but they should have been laid out in the north-south direction, not this west, but I don't expect a tennis court to be that way, rotating 90 degrees. Thank you for your point.
Yes, well, again, that always bothered me about those courts, so thank you for confirming that. It would be my hope, but I don't know what the cost would be moving them to north-south. But anyway, back to this project, I'm going to just go in order. We saw the turf field portion first, the grandstand, $600,000. We saw the turf field portion first, the grandstand, $600,000. And the fencing, there is a four-foot fence there, why does it need to be changed to
Sedowski, Director of Public Works. Home Sally, it has to do with the CIBC, the state regulations, as a certain number, linear feet of fencing, in this case about 1,300 feet, has to be six feet high, has to include a certain number of gates that basically enclose it. So a four-foot high fence just doesn't meet the state's requirements and I think the goal of the Board of Ed's athletics is to bring this to a state certified so that we can do state tournaments and it has to have a taller fence.
Thank you. Well, at the May meeting, ladies and gentlemen, you heard the town clerk read the three portions of the resolution a couple of times tonight. And at the Board of Selectment meeting, the third one, which had to do with the turf fields, wasn't included, only one and two, which had to do with the high school baseball and the high school softball. And when Mr. Frida started explaining the need for grandstands at the turf fields, I said, well, we need to add that. And we did add that. At my motion, we added the third section to install grandstand seating at the middle school's turf fields. It doesn't say any other related improvements, so I think that we should be limited to the language of the resolution that was passed unanimously by the Board of Selectment and the language that was passed by the Board of Finance and the language that was read tonight.
30 seconds.
Okay. All right. So we really need, I should have self-subtraction for the people who came up and answered. We really should not be including the fencing. The Board of Ed has, last I looked, more than a $500,000 to $600,000 capital improvement fund. I think they could fund this as well as the rentals. I will get to, I'm also concerned about the fact that there's nothing in here for the softball field or baseball field for protective netting, which I think is very important to protect the fans and is specifically...
And that's time. Please, please step down.
I'll come back and speak when everyone else has had a chance.
Absolutely.
This is what we do, the match, what we said we were going to do. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nancy Barrett and I am both an elected member of Board of Finance, but I'm here this evening just as all of us a member of the town meeting. I'm also a parent of three children who have gone through the school systems and been very active in athletics. I'm a former athlete myself as well as a former coach. So I'd just like to distinguish, just for everyone for context, there were items that were mentioned in our local newspapers that kind of glossed over several of the topics that are discussed this evening and I think it's important to understand that they fall into different buckets, if you will. So first, we have a budget and we recently had a referendum in which we passed by only 503 votes that were total cast for a $116 million budget. And that's what funds both the town side of the budget as well as the Board of Ed. And secondly, we have another source of funding, which is the American Rescue Plan Act and that is federal funding and that is paying for about $800,000 in capital improvements that used to be part of our budget and removed, as well as we'll pay ultimately for the track reconstruction that was mentioned, as well as several town green renovations since we didn't get the grant for those town renovations. We actually, according to Mr. Frida, are actually running a little bit of a deficit in ARPA funds to do what we actually want to do in our town. But as Mr. Frida mentioned, and then the third pillar, of course, is debt. And I'd just like to emphasize for everyone, we are still carrying the debt for the high school, for the renovation of the four firehouses, the $69 million middle school, the police department, as well as a school security bonding package, and of course, $2 million in paving each and every year. So that adds up over time. And so as Mr. Frida mentioned, he believes that the debt service will decrease in four to five years and I believe that that would be the best time to take on additional debt, not at this particular point when we all know the inflation rate is at its highest in decades. So I think that we need to make the important decisions that favor wants over, that favor needs over wants, that is, because we're really not in the business of keeping up with the Joneses. So, and again, regarding this particular three-point project, if student safety is really the top priority, then why are we starting with stadium seating? My real concern is that we will repeat the same experience that we had with the middle school project in which we had great aspirations of fulfilling all that was promised to the people that voted for the middle school and then we ultimately ran out of money even though we had $69 million to work with. So, and ultimately, as we saw, the project for the baseball field, relocating it, I think it's 42 feet, excuse me, 42 feet, is going to cost us, just for the relocation, $1.5 million. So I think it's important to keep all of these things in context, but also I believe that there was a comment made at the Board of Selectment meeting that it's unfortunate that this particular project is being considered at the same time that our state elected officials are also considering ways to address juvenile criminals in our state and in our town as well. And the implication is somehow that if we improve our baseball fields and softball fields and stadium seating, that somehow will reduce crime and it's quite the opposite. I think if we really want to reduce not only crime, but also kids doing wheelies up and down Washington Avenue, that we really have to engage all youth in our town. And I certainly am an advocate for safe athletics in our town, but I also feel an obligation to also serve those children who are not interested in baseball or softball or those particular sports that take place on the turf field. So again, I made a specific request of Mr. Frida to not only provide the numbers this evening, but also a mock-up map, which I don't believe has been provided yet.
30 seconds.
And also, none of these numbers were actually presented to the Board of Finance or to the Board of Selectmen in advance of their vote. So I'd like you all to just consider that contextual information and also just recognize that we need to be very careful as well as protective of our town's finances because this is additional debt. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there someone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. Dave Micus, 30th Central Avenue. I'm also a local business owner here in town and I made the mistake about eight months ago, actually it was probably a year and a half ago, of not putting a roof on the building that we occupy. And by waiting about six months from that decision, it cost me an extra $30,000 to put their same roof on now that I could have done just a short time ago. So why did we wait? I don't see any reason why we should wait to do this project. I've lived in town a long time, I don't recall a mill rate increase in quite a number of years. I'm very happy with our new police station, I'm very happy with our new fire stations, I'm very happy with the roads in town that are certainly coming along. I was on the middle school building committee and I'm very proud of the middle school building committee. We did a whole lot with what we had and yeah, it always comes up a little short and we came up a little short, but that's because the project had some problems that were unseen and we were still able to accomplish quite a bit, so I'm proud of our middle school building committee. We've got a lot of nice things here in town and we have a responsibility to finish the job and take care of our athletic fields. What good are these beautiful schools and beautiful facilities if we don't have fields to play on? We have the time, the time is now, we have the money, we haven't seen any increase in quite some time. The debt service appears to be coming down, now's the time, there's no reason to wait. We just have a responsibility to act and do things from time to time, not sit back and wait for things to deteriorate until it's going to cost us twice as much to fix them five years from now. So thank you very much, Mr. Frida.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello, everyone. My name is Brian Copland, 49 Beach Lane, North Haven. I know a lot of faces in the crowd here today. I'm a huge athletic person. I've spent my entire life, I played college baseball in Harris College, pitched in the College World Series, so my baseball is near and dear to me, I have a lot of great memories for that. But one thing I wanted to mention and I hope Mike can maybe give us some insurance about this for the town, when you have children, I thought my son would follow baseball. I started in the baseball fields down in Monroe's and one day it comes to me and he says, hey Dad, I want to play soccer. Now, a person who loves baseball and thought that he would follow him, and he goes, Dad, I'll play soccer. I'm like, all right, let's do it. So there's a Kickstart program here in town. If any of you are in soccer parents here in town, it starts in Memorial Field. Dave Micus just mentioned fields, right? If you're a soccer parent, we use like two or three fields and they're overused. So I'd love to add, if Mike could mention this tonight, is some insurance, as you just mentioned, there's a grant for the middle school where my daughter plays middle school soccer, that baseball field there, about $250,000 mentioned. $3.5 million, as Dave mentioned all the time, is very minimal. Our mill rate really hasn't increased and I think you do need to help baseball, help softball, help the tennis program. But one thing I want you all to remember, all the kids that are in high school, guess where they start? At the Kickstart program in the town. And I know that this vote tonight is for the high school fields, but remember where your kids started. They started on the town fields. So if Mike, if you could give us some reassurance, is that something on your agenda and something that you're thinking about helping the soccer program, I'd love to hear from you tonight.
Thank you, Brian. Brian happens to be a very good friend of mine and he makes a very good point and I'd like to share with you what we're doing in terms of a parallel program, has nothing to do with tonight. So I met with the leaders of the soccer club and we had some issues and we took care of a few of the issues and a few of the requests that they had. We refurbished the kickboard, we sandblasted it, soccer club, I believe, painted it, so it was good collaboration there between the town and the soccer board. We put new bleachers there at Memorial Field. They asked me if I would consider player benches, we added player benches also. And we also restored the guardrail that separates Liddell's parking lot from Memorial Field. I've even offered to have the soccer club use the building there that could be used as a concession stand. So the problem with Memorial Field is the utilization of it. Games or practices run from March through, let's say, mid-November. The water company, the RWA shuts the water down in late September, early October because if the temperature drops, they don't want their water lines freezing and bursting. So through the summer, the late summer, late September, October, November, there's really no irrigation on that field which wears it out. So I, once again, have met with the board, actually had a conference call with the soccer board this past Friday. Brian and I were texting each other, Brian came up with an excellent suggestion. What can we do at Aces Field on Mill Road? I sent Public Works out there, we measured the field and I think Brian and I think Anna's here tonight and some other members from the soccer board, we might be able to put a soccer field there, a regulation soccer field. Now Brian asked me about lights at Aces on Mill Road for night games that could have a residential impact, so I can't make that commitment because the neighbors are going to have to weigh in having lights over at Aces Field. Another suggestion was, can we look at, we talked about the tennis courts earlier, can we look at the field that's adjacent to the tennis courts, I believe it's a rugby field now, and convert that to a soccer field? Well, it might not be regulation, but it might be a field that we could find the funding for to put lights there. And if we can get that done, that would allow some games to go over there and perhaps rest Memorial Field because for those that understand landscaping and how to transform fields, sometimes you've got to shut a field down for a year in order to let it, to put what you need to put into it so that it can grow back in a proper fashion. Being used every day is not a way to be able to properly maintain a field. So let's summarize on soccer, because soccer, there's a lot of families here that play soccer, a lot of kids. I'm open to Aces Field based on Brian's suggestion. I had it measured, we think we can fit a regulation field in there. The next step is I'm going to be going out there with Public Works with members of the soccer board to look at it. The field over there by the tennis courts, I'm open to finding the funding for lights because I don't think there's a residential impact there. And I'm even willing to work with the soccer group to do a survey with the residents in the area around Aces over on Mill Road to see if lights would be an inconvenience for them. So tonight, we're talking about what we talked about, but there are other projects, ladies and gentlemen, that we're involved with to try to continue to improve and soccer's one of them. Brian, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it does.
Karen Castenow, 26 Allen Road, North Haven. I am currently the varsity softball coach here and I was just wondering as far as the field renovations go, does that include resurfacing the field itself because we have a couple of danger spots that need to be addressed? It does? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess that's, oh, yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bernie Pellegrino. I am the head coach of the girls' lacrosse team here at the high school that resides at 754 Orange Street in New Haven after 48 years, 50 years, here in North Haven. I'm here to speak in favor of the project as a whole. I think the improvements at all of the facilities are warranted for a number of reasons, I'll get into in a minute. And of course, most important to myself and our female athletes are the new bleachers proposed to the turf fields behind the middle school. I've spoken in many meetings like this about those fields over the past 10 years in getting them approved and installed, constructed and into utilization for our athletes, about the benefits that we projected we would receive from the construction of those fields and looking back now, after having played four seasons on those fields, I can tell you that almost all of those, well, all of the benefits that we projected have come to fruition for our athletes. And as Dave said, I think now is the time to finish the job with the installation of bleachers and the other improvements proposed for those fields so that not only our athletes, our student athletes, but our spectators, our parents, our grinniparents who are taxpayers in the town who would like to enjoy the benefits that our players are receiving from the fields from a true facility standpoint. And I think that's the next logical step and I look forward to you all voting tonight to approve this project so that we can finish the job at the middle school, improve safety at the softball and baseball field. improve safety at the softball and, uh, baseball fields, and improve our athletic facilities as a whole here in North Haven. I'm proud to coach here in town. I think we have a great program. I think, um, all of our programs, all of our athletes and all of our coaches worked tirelessly to make our athletic program as good as it can be with much success. But I think that the improvements to these facilities will enhance the benefit to our athletes and, and increase our opportunities as coaches and administrators to continue to develop these programs. Our players and our coaches talk every day about the life lessons that we learn participating in high school athletics. It goes well beyond the X's and O's of the game of girls lacrosse. We talk about every day, working hard for the benefit of the group, sacrificing individual aspirations for the good of the team, preparation and practice to improve your ability to be successful. By definition, these facilities are extensions of the classroom in this building and in the middle school. We are teaching life lessons on the field every single day, and the facilities that we participate in should reflect the importance we feel as, as members of this community to have facilities that will allow us to teach those life lessons to our student athletes every day. So, what you'll do tonight in voting in favor of this, um, resolution is not only to put a new fence around the field, but to improve the opportunities for our young student athletes to be able to more affect, to better effectuate and learn the lessons that we want to impart upon them, and that we work hard to do so every day.
30 seconds.
Last thing I'll mention, and my touchdown, is that for the seven teams that will enjoy the benefits of the improvements to this facility are teams for our female athletes, including my lacrosse team. By my estimation, 60% of the student athletes that will enjoy these benefits are female athletes. This year, we celebrate 50 years from the, of the passage of Title IX.
And that's time, please step down.
It's a program that improved this program in that regard. Thank you.
I'm Bernie at Palme's, 14 Hoover, North Haven. I just have a clarifying question of timeframe. If you can give us some insight into when this project would start and when I know everything comes into fruition, but what do you think the timeframe of this full, like, project would be? Thank you.
Now, that's a great question. So, if this resolution passes tonight, I'll be immediately meeting with our bond financial advisors whom I work very closely with. I anticipate, should this resolution pass, having the $3.5 billion by the end of the first week in July, and at that point, we will immediately go out to bid. Now, what we don't know is the people bidding on it, what the backup may be with work they're already doing, so, and there are some supply chain backups with materials that we're seeing with the town overall, but my plan is to move immediately upon passing of this resolution, and I'll have the money by the end of the first week in July to move forward to go out to bid on all of these projects.
Would anyone else care to speak?
Hello, everybody. I'm Bethany Zampa, 99 Sugar Hill Road, North Haven, and, um, I just wanna first extend gratitude to, to Mike Frida, um, because my kids play soccer and, um, he's been very, um, collaborative in thinking about ways that we can improve, um, those conditions for our, our kids. That said, I wanna speak on behalf and in favor of this $3.5 million bond package, um, which will fund much needed improvements to high school softball field, the baseball field, and the bleachers system. Um, someone had mentioned that they didn't think the bleachers were necessary, but I would just say that I think it's really important, um, for the parents and the grandparents, the taxpayers of this town, to be able to support their athletes, um, and be able to view them from the bleachers. Overall, I think the upgrades that are proposed are very, um, strategic and smart. We have a great town, and a foundation of our town is athletics, and I think that we should continue, continue to support that in part with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would someone else like to speak?
One more thing, I'm hoping that, um, in the bidding process, we could consider, um, utilizing and doing, um, green, um, proposals as part of the process, um, as something in favor of sustainability, and hoping that can be at least considered.
All right, if everyone here has, uh, spoken who would like to speak, then I will offer Sally a chance to come back up for an additional five minutes.
Again, I'm, I'm focusing on the language of the resolution that the Board of Selectmen passed in, in May, and the language that was in the resolution tonight. Um, I didn't see anything on the slides for the softball field or the tomato baseball field, um, for seating, protective netting, restroom facility improvements, or additional parking. Will, will that be included? Those are, those are specific things listed. Are those gonna be addressed, um, in these? Because there's nothing listed here on those slides.
So, Sally, um, what we looked at, what the slides are, what we call like the bare minimum, so as we start to put things out for bid and answer your question from the lady that asked us how long things were gonna take, once we bring the consultant that would lay out the master plan, and we'll bring in the professional engineer who lays out the plan for everything that we're looking for that you're talking about, and then we're gonna start to look at the bidding process. Is it cheaper to include it in a bid spec and put it out as a bigger project, or is it cheaper or less expensive to go through the DAS system, you know, Department of Administrative Services such as fencing, and maybe go with like the local fencing contractor? Um, so, we're gonna look at all those things, and one of the tougher problems that we have with COVID and the supply chain, you know, depending on who you talked about, grandstands, some say, "I'll get it to you in three months," others say, "Six months." Some say the, the grandstands may cost $450, others say $600. So, until we actually get out to the bidding process, we won't know the full magnitude of everything that we planned then including. So, where we have standings on some things, we're gonna move them into the other items that you're discussing.
Well, it's just my hope that we do specifically address and provide specific things that are listed here. That's all that my, my point.
I think that's our hope too.
Okay, all right. Uh, otherwise, wording in the resolution, you know, is not being effectuated at all. And then, again, I wanna stress, the third part of the resolution says installation of grandstand, grandstand seating at the middle school synthetic turf fields. Um, there's no language, and this is, again, that was my motion that added the turf fields to this, uh, I specifically left out, and other related improvements, because I, I, it was told to me that it was going to be only grandstand seating. So, again, this fencing at $130,000 should not be in this project, um, and should be covered by the Board of Ed that has ample money to do so. I am generally in support of this, I do support this, as I said before. I certainly realize the important role that sports plays in the, um, development of our children and our, our students. I agree with, uh, Mr. Pellegrino about the life lessons learned on, uh, the field in, um, uh, um, as far as sportsmanship and being a good teammate, uh, certainly life lessons in the future, but we need a safe and appropriate, uh, fields, and so this is why I am generally in support of this. I just wanna follow the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For this agenda item, we have the following resolution. Resolved, A, that the Town of North Haven appropriate $3,500,000 for athletic field improvements consisting of, one, installation of dugouts, grandstand seating, a press box and protective netting, restroom facilities improvements, additional parking, field improvements, and other related improvements at the girls' high school softball field. Two, relocation of the field, installation of dugouts, additional seating, a press box, batting cages and protective netting, additional parking and other related improvements at the boys' high school baseball field. And three, installation of grandstand seating at the middle school synthetic turf fields. The appropriation may be spent for design, demolition, and construction costs, equipment, furnishings, materials, site improvements, survey costs, architects' fees, engineering fees, other consultants' fees, legal fees, net temporary interest and other financing costs, and other expenses related to the project. B, that the Town issue bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed $3,500,000 to finance the appropriation for the project. The amount of bonds or notes authorized to be issued shall be reduced by the amount of grants received by the Town for the project. The bonds or notes shall be issued pursuant to Section 7-369 of the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of 1958 as amended and, and, and any other enabling acts. The bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the Town secured by the irrevocable pledge of the full faith and credit of the Town. C, that the Town issue and renew temporary notes from time to time in anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds from the sale of the bonds or notes for the project or the receipt of grants for the project. The amount of the notes outstanding at any one time shall not exceed $3,500,000. The notes shall be issued pursuant to Section 7-378 of the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of 1958 as amended. The notes shall be general obligations of the Town and shall be secured by the irrevocable pledge of the full faith and credit of the Town. The Town shall comply with the provisions of Section 7-378A of the General Statutes with respect to any notes that do not mature within the time permitted by said Section D, that the First Selectman and the Treasurer of the Town shall sign any bonds or notes by their manual or facsimile signatures. The law firm of Pullman and Comley LLC is designed, is designated as Bond Counsel to approve the legality of the bonds or notes. The First Selectman and the Treasurer are authorized to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, redemption provisions, form, and other details of the bonds or notes to designate one or more banks or trust companies to be certifying bank, registrar, transfer agent, and paying agent for the bonds or notes, to provide for the keeping of a record of the bonds or notes, to designate a financial advisor to the Town in connection with the sale of the bonds or notes, to sell the bonds or notes at public or private sale, to deliver the bonds or notes, and to perform other, all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds or notes. E, that the Town hereby declares its official intent under Federal Income Tax Regulation Session, Section 1 dot 150 dash 2, that project costs may be paid from temporary advances of available funds, and that except to the extent reimbursed from grant monies, the Town reasonably expects to reimburse any such advances from the proceeds of borrowings in an aggregate principal amount not in excess of the amount of borrowing authorized above for the project. The First Selectman and the Treasurer are authorized to amend such declaration of official intent as they deem necessary or advisable, and to bind the Town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds or notes authorized by this resolution, if issued on a tax exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years. F, that the First Selectman and the Treasurer are authorized to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information, which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds or notes. And G, that the First Selectman, the Treasurer, and other proper officers of the Town are authorized to take all other action which is necessary or desirable to complete the project and to issue bonds, notes, or other obligations to finance the aforementioned appropriation. Is there a second for the resolution? Second?
Eleven.
Okay, uh, we will now vote on the resolution for tonight's agenda item. All in favor of the Agenda Item Number One's resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay.
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 The resolution passes. And there being no further business for the Town Meeting, I hereby declare the meeting adjourned. The minutes of this meeting will be reported by the Town, Town Clerk as soon as possible. Thank you.
the Town of North Haven. Watch Town Meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.